That we still want to see so we can start formulating what we want. I said, but even when they have money, all that money will not be
For them.
For y'all.
Yeah.
There's salaries and there's utilities and their stuff. We still want to know so we can see what they're asking for so we can get our list in.
Where was this from?
Very probably, and he had got two calls on it.
Two?
Where was this from?
I think we're on.
From, uh, he, she got Lake Harbor. I got one, mine from Shell Oil and Monterey.
They all saying the same thing?
Yeah.
Well.
I make a motion to go out of executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Wilcox. Come out of executive session. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's have it. Record show.
Also be noted, no action was taken.
There you go.
Okay, what I have for y'all today is a very brief, uh, overview of what has been turned into the, what has been requested. Uh, this is general, this is the general fund, um.
Got anything Kimmy Broom in here yet?
Yeah, we have stuff with. But I just, I could call him down. I just wiped his clothes.
Uh, okay. He might have, uh.
He, he knows better than that.
He, he might have the goods this time, so.
He knows better than that, so, um.
Alright.
This, let's just go down it real quick and let me just give y'all a couple little highlights on, on each one of them if y'all have your rights, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Uh, first from the board of supervisors, what I had put in here are, um, the increase you can see was for architect and engineering fees that we've got in conjunction with courthouse renovations. And the raises that we've been getting, all departments contain a, at least a seven hundred and fifty dollar raise per employee with, um, of course, no raises for part-time or retirees as we do. And they might already have some adjustments. Um, the second one, Chancery Clerk's Office, there is no change. Uh, Circuit Clerk, you can see a small increase of fifty three hundred dollars and that's proposed for absentee ballots during, uh, an election, which means presidential. The tax collector has a hundred and twenty six thousand nine fifty five. That is for some, um, I don't, and I can't say just like P D imaging software, uh, personal property. I don't know exactly what that software is and some, uh, real appraisal supplies and some computers that they do in classes. Like I said, raises, I have figured in seven fifty in each, each one of these. Uh, the tax collector, um, their increase would be thirty eight, three seventy six, and that's, um, raises plus the new educational allowances. Um, she's got about, I believe there's five or six that we did an additional two thousand, twenty-five hundred this year from going to those classes, some of which you approved this morning. The county administrators department, we've got a, just a small, um, decrease. It's just some adjustments. And I do not have a web manager salary in this figure. That one's still sort of, um, up in the air. I've got some resumes, some of them, they have no experience whatsoever. That's why I haven't interviewed anybody yet. And the other one is like at a college, wanting to come, and I know that that's gonna be, then I've got an out of town one, a person from Vicksburg putting in. So that one's still up in the air.
You wanted me to be your new P R guy, didn't you?
Thank you, yeah.
Um, purchasing, the increase there is, uh, raises and adjustment on rigid and then some electric and equipment. Um, for an attorney, that's raised and office supplies. I know Craig's gonna say he didn't put in for that much increase in there, but, but we had talked about it.
That's right.
Yes, so.
We, we got it taken care of.
Yes. We just passed him up in that part.
Yeah.
Uh, superintendent of education is about a ten thousand dollar increase, and that's in utilities, just as they go up every year. Uh, maintenance of buildings and grounds, a hundred and thirty-five, that's raises. He's got a vehicle in there that's some utility increases and some service and cars. I T, as they presented it to me, is a decrease. There is a, a requested raise for Rusty in there, a fifteen hundred, seven fifty for the others is what I put in, and then he's got a reduction in some of the capital allocation.
Yeah, I know there's been a raise for him every year.
Veteran's Service Officer is a conference fee, it's a small increase. Uh, community development, um, their increase is about seven thousand two hundred. That's, um, there was some miscellaneous deductions. We have added raises and ten thousand for, uh, zoning win, uh, for P D D. It's time for that to be reduced. Uh, Chancery Court, the increase of fifty-six thousand eight sixty is basically for, there wasn't enough of their court reporters as it was for this year, and then they do get a raise, um, this year, House Bill ten forty-nine. And that will be for three consecutive years till they get up to the max.
Who, who gets the raise?
Court reporters.
The court reporter?
Yes. Uh, like the, I think the max they'll get at the end of the third year, they could go up, I believe, to sixty-two, but I know right now we have one at forty-eight that the judge wants to take her to fifty-four. And then, you know, probably some in the next year and all. Um, Circuit Court, there's an increase of thirteen five fifty-four. This might not even be enough. Um, there'll be some additional juror costs, having a third, um, judge in there, and then the court reporter cost within that, um, taking those court reporters up. I don't know about an administrator in here because when a new judge comes in, I know that they do get an allowance. I don't know how much of that allowance he would use for his court administrator. So that would probably won't be noted until after January. Uh, County Court, the increase there for the last, uh, raise that the judge gets for House Bill four eighty-four, and then the court reporter raise and, um, the administrator raise. Uh, Youth Court, a hundred and sixty-four, three fifty-four. This is all basically, well, we have the House Bill four eighty-four, which is the judges and the employees, but there is a grant that they're getting that will show up on the receipt side that covers most of this increase. Uh, Lunacy Court, no change. Justice Court, um, even with the raises, there's a slight reduction on what Jessica gave to me, just some things that they could have cut out. Uh. Coroner Department is just miscellaneous deductions, uh, three thousand. Uh, the district attorney does, um, some payroll decreases. They are having a, quite a few people, you know, we have on our side, we have people we pay for, and they have been, had, quite a few of the ones that are on our side have retired and are coming back and have to salary. So therefore, it's reducing, um, some of the costs that we have, uh, through payroll. Uh, the county attorney, it would be an increase of eleven, three sixty-one. That's for the House Bill four eighty-four raise that's allowed to him. He is a year behind the judges. Uh, secretarial raises, some office supplies were there for sure this year. Uh, public defender, as it stands right now, there'd be a slight reduction just in, in the insurance that was calculated. Elections, um, they've requested an increase of three hundred and fifty-three thousand four seventy-five, and basically, three hundred and fifty of that was for electronic poll books and voting machines. Which wouldn't near about cover it if it was voting machines, I mean. But I put in what the departments requested. So that's why I said, we're just gonna do this brief book review, and then we'll have to go back to each one of them.
Yeah, when are we going to actually talk about possible, start paying them more money? Poll workers. At what point, y'all will do that the next time?
I guess when we talk about, um, the individual departments, we could
Okay.
Look at it at that when we get to the department. Uh, the sheriff's administration, the increase of two hundred and seventy-two thousand nine fifteen is, um, the raises and the adjustments that the sheriff's department put in, plus or minus, um, other items. And that, uh, Ken might can speak better to, um, the raises that they've done. You know, they wanted their low-end people from eleven eighteen to be brought up the base of vote before. And then he has categorized people according to, um, when they got out of academy and the number of years of service. So some of his will not get any increase, and then there would be some that would get closer to three thousand because it would bring them in line with the number of years they've served, the, the level that they're at, and everything like that.
So we're not talking about raises handed out previously then? Oh, okay.
This one would be a totally different.
Alright.
Like, what we actually proposing, like our dispatchers start out eleven eighteen and out.
They would take them twelve fifty-four.
They would take them to twelve fifty-four, which would get us counting in line with all the surrounding people. But even in the jail, they would go up to the twelve fifty-four. But they'd only get their raise once they completed their training, like if we had somebody that had no experience, they would start out at eleven eighteen and out. And then somewhere between the six months and the year, they would actually complete either their communications certificate or their jager's kit. And which time they completed, then I was a bit, uh, a raising increase or a decreasing, because they completed their training and they're now certified, so it would bump them up. So it wouldn't be like a hit all of the time, it would be gradually. But then other people, you know, everybody's all out of whack, so we're trying to get it kind of in line for, because we may have somebody that's been working here for a long period of time that's been certified. And then when we were bringing the people in, trying to, you know, align everybody, those people that's been working for us has kind of been left behind. So just trying to align everybody. Patrol, that's what they was actually starting out with, was an officer that come in. He was making twelve, uh, sixty-four, which bumped him to fourteen oh seven, I think it's right. Because, you know, actually, your patrolman here when they start, they could have actually worked at floatwood at dispatching and made what they was making on the road. So it's kind of been, all our start salaries have been kind of.
So where's that gonna put them at, the patrolmen, starting off?
Fourteen oh seven.
What's that come to annually?
How?
Thirty.
It'd be thirty, so it's gonna be twenty-eight.
It's gonna be.
Thirty thousand, around thirty thousand.
And they have, they do have a little built-in overtime each week because of the scheduling, so.
Yeah.
Around probably thirty.
Okay, alright.
Forty-nine to sixty-five.
That's pretty darn close.
Thirty.
Alright. Okay, alright.
Does that, Ken, is that, I guess this number, because I know you're gonna have to go off at individuals, knowing that they're going to these classes and things like that, is that, is that gonna take care of all that money for that year? You know what I'm saying? Cause you, or you just kind of putting a cushion in there and expecting them to go to the classes and things like that, or how's that gonna work?
Yeah, so, I mean, we'll have the budget for that.
Right.
Sooner or later, they will come up.
Right.
But, you know, we, we have cushions, but
Yeah.
Budget year, we should have money left over, but, you know, it's kind of hard.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, it's hard to, hard to know. It may be.
Usually they're on a six-month probation.
Right.
So, you know, they don't usually go to class or anything before that six months.
Right.
But we have to have them done within the year.
Right.
And, uh, so, you know, once they complete that certification for their communications or detention, you know, that's when they get bumped up. Which, you know, top, top of most of our department here, you know, the sheriff, it's kind of an incentive too, you know, if I stay here and I get to complete this training and all, you know, I'll get bumped up to this.
Right.
So it's kind of an incentive too.
So like a step, like step raises almost.
Yeah, and then plus, you know, if they don't complete or they don't make their six-month probation and, you know, we get rid of them or whatever the case may be, then we ain't out that other dollar fifty or whatever.
Right, gotcha. Okay.
And that, that's kind of what we're trying to, gotta do is just, we, we got to get up on our start salary. I pulled it back from, in the last two years, we've had fifty-something people leave. And, you know, and usually, and that's what I talked to Laura, you know, you bring them in, talk to them, what, what's going on? You know, we've had people leave out of jail just to make another dollar an hour. But, you know, and I understand now, oh, damn, I understand all the insurance and all that, that's great, but when you get our, these younger generation now, it's like, I don't need insurance, I don't need money.
Yeah.
That's what makes it work.
They don't think about the insurance till they get to our age, right?
Yeah.
They don't think about that nine percent coming out for purs either.
Right.
Well, ours is fifteen point seven five. Theirs comes out, but ours is overmatched, and that's also something a lot of them complain about, you know. They have to be in purs, but the younger ones don't see the benefit of being in it. So they're like, nine percent, you know, is coming out. Gosh, if I could keep that, I'd invest it. But.
Right.
You know.
The best we did was.
The best investment would be hers, but they don't, they don't, they don't see that, so.
It had the Bud Light.
But, um.
You know, I did see a four, a four pocket guy.
Is that right?
Why not three?
Basically, the, the jail operations is the same scenario and for juvenile justice where the J D C, that's basically the same scenario with the sheriff's department there. Um, ambulance service is up a little bit. That's the capita amount we have to pay them. E O C is up, um, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight fifty-six, their request, which is five percent, uh, pay raise they're requesting for theirs, plus a new employee. Now, the new employee is not included because even though Bob requested one, he did not say anything about how much he'd like to pay them. So I didn't even put that in there right now. And then equipment and uniforms. Um, National Guard, we didn't have anything in there this last year. It's the same. I've had no requests, no formal requests. The constables, you're gonna see a hundred and forty-four thousand nine sixty increase. That is not actually an increase in the amount of money because we've got two in claims right now, two constables that are paid through claims, two constables that are paid through payroll. I want to swap them January one to payroll. It is a complete nightmare to have them on two different systems. And because we are now allowed to pay a portion of the purs, which is terribly confusing still, what will happen is the money that Jessica settles for the constables into the constable fund will be swapped over into general county. So it will show on the receipt side as well as the expenditure. So it's not actually increasing that department, it's just the methodology in which we're gonna pay them. Um, because hers is now letting us pay monthly, but not our fifteen point seven five percent. They're still keeping the constables at eleven percent, but of the eleven percent, we can pay all pro rata share of fifteen point seventy-five off the eleven percent. It's, it's just very confusing, but, um.
Yeah, it is.
It, it is, but it would be the best to have them all over in one system or the other.
Okay.
Um, the next is the gang warden. We increased that during this year, uh, for the robotic gear. It has not been paid for yet. I don't know that it will be before the, the year ends, so we should have an increase in that budget. Um, vector control, they requested the same thing as last year. Um, this M P E bonus grant, I'll be glad when all that money is gone. Um, I don't know how much they cut the balance. Hopefully, we can fix it this next year, finish it out. That was some money that they got that's been, been sitting aside, and they've been taking it down each year a little bit. It started out around sixty-seven thousand dollars. The FEMA safe room, the sheriff has requested, uh, sixty-three thousand one ninety-five more. That's just in, I guess, some different items that he feels the expense will be needed for this year. County surveyor, we did not have any money in there this year because we didn't have one, but we do have somebody that will be elected, and so what we will have there is insurance. Because he's an elected official, he will receive, um, insurance. The, uh, health administration, um, we have a little bit of decrease, and that was for a contract on permitted brush. It's now being paid, the contract we have is being paid to maintenance department. Um, Regent Hainville Health, they requested the same as they had last year, no increase. Triads, a grant that we get, so it will show up on the receipt side as well as, um, this side. Welfare administration, we see the little highlights here on their number. I have not received a formal request from him this year. So I just, done in that department, looking over our costs, will be decreased utilities because it's been a little bit extra in there. Council on Aging, uh, same as last year. Human Resource Agency, they have asked for a request. Um, some of that thirty-nine thousand nine fifty-two is utilities, but they have asked for a five point eight percent in their allocation that we give them. Uh, donations, patriotic and charitable, we did have a request for Mississippi Burn Center, not for the two thousand. I just stuck that in there. They did not give an amount that they wanted. They just asked for some funding for this year. In the past, we have funded, um, the food pantry that we found out that we could no longer fund, and we funded, um, about eighteen thousand to the children's
Yeah.
Shelter that we have that is not operable right now either. So we're not, we're not funding either one of those. Um.
It's Mississippi Burn Center, right here.
The burn center's not
Didn't they move to Heinz County?
See, yeah.
They're over it, right, C M C, see.
Laura, what about that, uh, I remember one time we gave some money to, um, battered women's shelter.
Well, that's been a long time ago.
Yeah.
We haven't done that.
But can we? I got an invite to a breakfast tomorrow. I'm assuming that.
I've had, I've had no request.
Okay.
I think we're allowed, I understand we're allowed to.
Okay.
I've had no request from anybody.
Well, I got a feeling we about to get one.
The libraries, now this is just for the, um, headquarters. This isn't their allocation. This is for our utilities and all that we have up there. And, you know, because our maintenance department is also housed in the basement, we pay the utilities, and C M R L S pays us back a portion of those utilities that comes in on the receipt side. Recreation grant, I kept it at the same as it was last year. Soil conservation, I kept it the same. I've not received a request yet. County extension, um, they just have, um, Doug no longer has a cellphone through us, so there was the cellphone and some other miscellaneous charges, which have a little reduction in there. The livestock, uh, facility, there is a reduction there. You know, we had put in, uh, the budget last year for two, uh, employees plus Trish. It's working out really good with her right now. She's got one, so we reduced it, uh, by that other salary. Uh, C M P D D, their request is the same as last year. Advertising County Resources, I did go up five thousand because we have already overspent the twenty-five thousand. Capital projects, um, is a decrease, and that's only due to the available funds. We desperately need more in there, but right now, looking at all the requests from the other departments, I, I cut it just for the time being. And then our inter-fund transfer, which is Blue Cross New Shield, I did up that sum because the last two years, we've really had to put quite a bit, and we've had some really, really heavy claims. So, that being said, with the estimated increase in our outlay and other revenues and what has been requested from the departments, you're looking at that we're shy of about seven hundred to ten thousand dollars to meet those requests. Now, I don't have it totally finished for you today. I started working on one that, um, a different scenario, looking through each of the departments and cutting them back to a more manageable, uh, amount that I think they need, which may or may not be accurate. And taking three hundred and fifty out of elections, because y'all know, if we were to even entertain the idea of new voting equipment or anything, three hundred and fifty thousand's not going to
Touch.
Not gonna touch it at all. And it's a thing that would have to be done and approved by the board. So with some other changes, I've got it back in line, not even touching the sheriffs, with almost being a balanced budget. But now that does mean cutting out some things in some of the departments that are heavy requests. Um, one opinion that I have, something that I would, I think would be a good idea, maybe to look at this year, would be in some departments, not to fund all the capital outlay requests that they have that are such large ones for equipment that may or may not be in purchase, but give them some, but allow them to come back before you, if they actually need some of this other equipment that they, they have in the budget, you know. Uh, we're not talking about something about, we set aside for sheriff vehicles every year. We know that, that we do that. We're not talking, I'm not talking about that. But let different departments come before you and show you the necessity of having that equipment and all. What, what happens right now is we get departments, it makes it really hard on rigid. July, August, and September, they see that they still have money in their capital outlay, and they try to be the deadline of ordering everything they can to expend it all, because they know that it's gonna go away come the end of the year. And so then we run into, can we get it paid by the end of September so it doesn't lead over to next year?
Yeah. Well, I don't think it costs that much to build those boxes for, uh, voting. I mean, are you building this like a wood frame, you know, for people to vote at?
What, what is that?
You know, those little boxes, you know, for people to go vote?
Uh-huh.
That's, it's not much money. I think we'll be able to do it within that amount of money, for sure.
Well, I don't think that that's what they're
I don't think that's what they're asking. I don't know what it is.
They're wanting to go paper balance.
Electronic poll books and voting machines.
Oh, okay. Man, I could have swore we was talking about going paper balance. Man.
You, for seven and a half years, you've been there.
And we have, we have talked about it, but I know even at that, that is going to be a tremendous expense.
Yeah.
Heinz County went through it last year, and, um, I mean, had vendors come in and did several proposals. I mean, they did an in-depth study, and their ballot system cost them millions.
Yeah, but they went with scanners. I'm talking about paper ballots, paper ballots.
And not scanning them at the precinct?
Scan them at the courthouse.
You know, the problem with that J is second chance ballot, and that's, that's gonna always be a trick that we've gotta deal with.
What do you mean second chance?
When you have an error in your voting in ballot.
Yeah.
When you have an error and a person goes out, they leave out, they come back in and say, I, I think I voted the wrong ballot. Or I remember that there was somebody that was supposed to be on there that I don't remember seeing on there.
Well, how's that corrected with, with the system we have today?
Well, uh, if they leave the precinct today, their ballot, that, that vote has already been cast
Right.
Into the system.
Yeah.
So there is no, you have to, you have to account for your mistake while you're still standing right there at the machine.
Well, I'm saying though, I mean, there's same problem, whether it's electronic or paper.
Yeah, I think, yeah, to your point is, banks have to make all the work, but they bring it up every time.
Okay.
Talk about scanning at the courthouse.
Ken, you don't think I'm getting nowhere in my paper ballots, man?
He's probably heard as long as I have.
Well, we gonna have three new supervisors gonna get an opportunity to hear it.
Hear it again?
Yeah. I, I, I hate the other one left.
One thing I did fail to mention though, our budget shares, is we actually had it for, uh, people.
Yes, we've had this true, within this.
Within that, because I had, I had a budget, I paid it for Chancery, the new judge.
Three court services.
And then I had to get a beta for our new circuit court judge, and then a mother deputy to help with security up here in this courtroom.
And then you got one for new.
Then an investigator for our.
And you're keeping it all within your current budget? That's awesome.
Well, I.
Oh, is it?
And his budget has been this in a year.
You know, we got no increase for our budget.
See, there's Kenny. Kenny, paper ballots. You, you missed the part, we was going paper ballots.
Well, you missed the point about where.
See, there we go.
No, see, you.
Jay's always going with paper ballots.
You missed the point where Jay wants to go paper ballots. That's what you missed.
Well, Jay's still gonna be a supervisor.
That's true.
There's a chance that you'll deal with this.
It's not starting nothing. You can't.
A good chance.
Oh.
Ooh.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Walter.
No, Greg's.
I did. There's no, there is never any guarantees.
Alright.
Anyway, this is just a brief overview this morning to show you, as usual, to request outweigh the receipts. That's nothing.
Seven hundred thousand, that's it.
Unusual.
Seven hundred thousand.
Um, we do need to set up some times, um, maybe next week or the beginning of the next, to come back and allow departments to come in. Either departments that you wanna talk to by virtue of what they have on here, or ones that want to request something of you.
Well, it, for sure, however the word got out, I don't know, but for sure, we need to get fire in here. I'm only, I don't know if E O C put it out. I don't know what happened, but.
I tell you what, whenever we do that, let's just have E O C. I tell you, whenever we do that, let's just have E O C and Bob and all them come together.
Right.
They all be there together.
That's right.
E O C and fire on the same day.
Which is good to me, I mean, that, but we just need to have.
And they can have their fire chiefs here.
And see, Bob controls, he's got the vector control falls under him, the E O C falls under him and then we have the fire.
They just need to know a date and a time so.
Right.
We can get hold, I know my two chiefs, I gotta let them know enough time advance, so.
Okay, and then um, I don't know who else that y'all would like to see. Sometimes a lot of the departments say the board doesn't have any questions of me, I don't.
Well, you, you brought up a good point a few minutes ago, I know that, you know, I, every year I have a budget that I have to meet and doing, running one right now and I can tell you, when I put in capital outlay, then I put it in priority, all of a sudden it's scratched through, scratched through, scratched through. So what you just brought up a few minutes ago is a very valid point, that's how, that's the only way you're gonna be able to get that number down, 'cause you know, I know that there's wants and then there is needs.
So you've already started whittling on that seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
Could you do the next report a little bigger?
I can.
Okay.
Or would you like for me to bring you spare, spare glasses?
Man, I can read this and I'm older than you.
Laura, I'm item number one, one fifty, superintendent of education. Since we're gonna have a change of the guard and in any case, there's gonna be a new superintendent, why don't we try to bring that number back in line?
Heck yeah.
Of, of only the things that we are statutorily obligated to do for that, for the superintendent?
Yes, sir.
Let's, and let's cut the fat off of that and let them take it on.
Insurance being one of them.
Administration, whatever, whatever it is.
Two over seven thousand.
Yeah. And the, and the electricity bill and all that.
Let's get all that straightened out, we've been arguing about it ten years.
That's a great idea.
You know, we have a lot of their phone lines still and I'm, I'm gonna get with Rusty and talk with him, but Rusty said right now that they are working on getting all of their phone lines together and going through the state like we just did and when they do, that will drop a lot of the lines off of our side.
So it'll be utility costs lower too then?
So that will lower the utility costs.
Okay.
Well, we definitely need to send that message, we're about to do that, so they can get prepared.
And these utilities, the ones that are here, that you see, the utilities that come through this one are not for the big office down here, it's for the frontiers and for, you know, some of the other offices that we have.
Frontiers are gonna get nixed.
That's y'all's decision.
Y'all are only required.
I mean, why do we even pay it? I never knew why we did.
I didn't know we did till, I think they brought it up last year, I think, that's the first I'd heard of it.
I know, it's been.
Necessary.
Necessary expenditures.
We'll look at it as we get going. When are we gonna meet again?
Um, that's up to y'all and we need to do it probably next week sometime.
All right.
Uh, morning, afternoon, whichever is convenient for y'all, Jared told me he'll be available next week just to set it up.
So do you wanna do it Monday?
We could, if, if it's convenient for everybody. I'll have to see what departments.
Monday or Thursday?
Should it be Thursday in order to give me time to get with the department, see who come in, schedule them a time and then let, like Greg knows, so he can let those, the people that have contacted him to let him know.
The twenty third.
Again, what we're doing with constables?
The constables right now, it was a big fiasco um last year. One of the um legislative things said that we could now pay PERS for them. So we brought two of them over into payroll, well, we brought actually all of them over into payroll. We started with their nine percent and the county matching it fifteen point seven five. Well, Pers gets involved in it and says, mm, you can't do that. The, the, the um, constables cannot pay anymore than eleven percent. So that they can't pay any more than eleven percent and the reason why is because at the end, they're still considered fee based and at the end of the year, they have to do the annual report, they get to deduct their expenses and then they pay PERS off of what is their net fee income. So they figured, Pers figured eleven percent was about right for everybody, so that's the formula we've used for years. So, we were all of a sudden stopped from paying their PERS, they said what we could do is, at the end of the year, when they fill out that report, if they owe any then, then the county could then pay the county portion of what they owe at the end of the year on their net fees. So we had two constables that wanted to remain in payroll, they're paying the eleven percent, themselves were not matching anything, and we had two that wanted to go back to claims. Well, it's a nightmare to do that because we're having to split part of the money out to go into general counties, part of the money's out here in the constable fund. It's, it just makes for, for bad accounting, we have to, these, in, in payroll, their insurance is pulled out automatically, over in claims, we have to mop it over into payroll to pay for the premiums, so Pers has now come out and said, the county can pay on a monthly basis, the portion of the PERS that equates to the county portion of eleven percent. So those are the little formula I use, we take the eleven percent and back it out to say, what portion of the eleven belongs to them and what belongs to the county and we can pay the county's portion of the eleven percent through payroll. And then make up any remaining difference at the end of the year. I talked quite a bit to Madison County, their comptroller up there and, because they were one of the last counties to be audited by the I R S before they stopped going around to all the different counties, because they said at this time, what they wanted to do, they were basically giving every county that they touched a different scenario. So the I R S pulled back out and said, what we wanna do is, we wanna regroup, get everything worked out, so now when we come back to the counties, it'll be the same for all counties, we'll take the same procedure for all of them. What they left that at, the um, I R S guy that was the one doing Mississippi, he said that in his opinion, and he was gonna get it structured that way, that constables would be employees. Because they don't receive, and like Larry receives fees, he gets a salary, but he actually receives the fees himself.
Yeah.
That makes him a fee official. They don't receive the fees, they're turned into the county.
Right.
And then we pay them, so they're saying technically, that doesn't make them a fee based official. So I wanna get them.
So we're still up in the air, basically?
So we are, but this won't be any, this increase is money that Jessica settles into the constable fund and I'll just swap it then over into the general fund where we will pay them. So it's not a technical increase in cash, the money's there.
Okay.
It's just an increase on our book side.
Gotcha.
Do you plan to meet with the constables? All of them and?
I do, we've done that.
At one time?
Yes, we've done that past and we will have another meeting with them again to tell them our intent, why we wanna do it, the reason for how.
It's not gonna cost them any money.
No, it's not.
One way or the others, a wash for them, right?
Well, it is gonna cost because there is one of them that says he is not subject to social security.
Where'd you get this?
It's on my desk.
Now, and every time I go to any kind of.
I never do, it was too much water.
Every year at our meetings, it comes up about constables, they're one of the number one things that we talk about because every county does differently. None of them in any county have ever had a constable that says they are not subject to the I R S, to social security. But we have one that says he does, so he's gonna fuss because he will have to pay seven point six five percent.
Wait, next you fussing there?
Well, right now, see, it's not, when they're paid through claims, you don't hold it out, they pay it at the end of the year as a self employee.
He's Heinz County.
So, um, anyway, that's a conversation to have with me.
Is that the twenty third?
I think the twenty third's good.
Next Thursday morning or afternoon?
Might as well start with the morning.
Start with the morning.
Nine o'clock.
Thursday at nine o'clock on the twenty third. And you would like to see, I know E O C.
You wanna hit them first?
We can, and then who else after that?
How long does this process take? What are you laughing at for? I've never done it. There's not, I didn't get an instruction manual, did y'all get an instruction manual?
It's okay.
This is, this is O G T.
This is.
Think about, think about the length of time.
On a job track.
That is beyond any concept that you can imagine, be able to stomach and then A I it, twelve hours.
It could take five hours, it could take five days.
Hey, y'all are fortunate, we did hours after hours.
We.
The nights up there.
We, we had some evenings.
We actually did, didn't we? We still do.
All right, so what am I supposed to tell the bride?
We still do.
Leave the light on for them.
Are you thinking?
Okay. I'm sorry, sir.
Are you thinking, I know, you know, last time we did, okay, at this time, we give them this much amount of time and then the next one, we went to the next, next one, give them this time to come in. Is that way, we're gonna try it this year? E O C, I'm fired at nine o'clock and then after that.
Right, we'll have to schedule them, you know, apart, but then I just wanted to see who else I could set up for that day to have in here, um, for y'all to talk to. Elections, do you wanna see if I can, I know that several of them work, so I don't know if they come or not.
I don't think there's any talk to them. None of them are coming back.
Well, that's just like, um.
They're not.
Greg, you were just talking about your budget, that's just like in the fire budget.
Right.
That was submitted to me, that's not all this because these are miscellaneous funds that we have. We ordered two fire trucks this year.
Right.
One of them was approved in the budget, that's ranking.
Right.
And the other we ordered was Monterey because they had the accident.
Right.
Neither one of those fire trucks will be ready until November.
Which will be in the next.
We didn't put any money in there for them.
Do we have money in this year's?
For, for one of them.
So can we not go ahead and?
Well, I'm, I'm taking the money over, but what I'm saying is the, the departments don't think ahead.
Right.
If I don't have it written down and don't think about it, it doesn't go in there.
So that numbers does not reflect in this number then?
Well, his fire budget's not in here, it's, it's not in general county, miscellaneous.
That was at hundred radio's the order.
I've had to.
Yeah, where?
So are we going to adjourn or recess till the twenty third?
It would be a recess.
Probably recess, yeah.
So, well, recess, you still have something else.
No, just anybody else that I need to get here that day.
Why don't we, why don't we recess, but look, you know, give us a little time to look at this and then we just get with you, give you a call, right?
And then who else you might want here on that?
And you might look at it too and say, look, I suggest let's give some, you know, give this one, 'cause you.
Great.
Just to quick, I think I told you I was gonna check with Larry Mobley on.
Yeah, yeah.
On the R squared project and y'all condition your uh authority.
Right.
On finding out exactly what bucket is, what their participation is. They don't have an accurate figure, but they are, they will be, the town will be responsible for all of the required easements associated with the construction, so they're taking that responsibility on in addition to the engineering costs. Not really sure what that amounts to, but it's a fairly significant amount of money. Larry told me to point out that, here comes the soft story, that their sales tax revenue uh for the last three months is down thirty percent. Uh, they are no longer collecting a franchise tax from R squared now, which has reduced their town revenue significantly since that's the only game in town and that their water revenue from R squared has been running around four thousand dollars a month and is now around seven hundred a month.
Hmm.
In other words, if the county doesn't help us with this project, it can't be done.
Wow.
So I said, I will tell the board what I've heard and maybe the, you know, their contribution on the, on the easement costs and the uh engineering costs will be enough.
Is this their one location?
Yeah, that's, you're talking about for bucket or for anywhere?
The R squared.
That's their only location.
So my business is not too good.
I don't know. Sir?
Where they make, manufacture something?
Yeah, it's a manufacturing, but I.
They used to make a lot of circuit breakers.
Yeah, that's mainly, I think that's what their big.
Like square D, I think it's.
That's, that's their biggest item that they really, and I think the employees, it went up about, if I'm not mistaken, fifteen to twenty employees.
Taxes, yeah.
So.
Oh yeah, that's one of the ones on the ranking first list that they bring us every year.
That they were, uh, that company was acquired by a, an outfit out of China, uh, if I recall correctly what you wrote, Greg.
Yep.
So, but they are intending to uh increase production at that site, what this process is about is to get a means of ingress and egress for their, uh, for the uh transport trucks that come in and out down there. And uh, anyway, there's the information. So if y'all are okay moving forward on, with that information, I'll pass it along to Larry, what's been approved, but y'all need to be satisfied.
This is not to exceed fifty.
That's not to exceed fifty.
And we're, I mean, I, I think our numbers from last time, from what I understood, is it Greg Bond, it's Greg Bond, said that it was looking between maybe thirty five, forty at the most. 'Cause I know Dale, we were talking about doing N kind and we were hoping to do the N kind, but he's just so slammed, there was no way to get everything done.
All right.
This is definitely white handling.
So we already voted on this, right?
Yeah, but you had a condition on, you wanted to know what bucket had.
Yeah.
I just gave you that information, so if y'all are okay, I'll go ahead and report to Larry what's been done so he can let the mayor know.
Okay, all right.
And that doesn't mean that we have to do now an inter local or anything like that, does it? Okay, good.
All right, motion recess till nine o'clock on the twenty third.